Well, good afternoon.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's meeting. We have a work session. First off, it's a BUBA demonstration discussion, and then after that, we have a special meeting. So we have a few items there that we need to consider. So we'll start off with our work session. BUBA demonstration and discussion.
And Mayor Council, if we could ask you all to join us in the hot seats down here.
Oh, sure.
Ooh, I called him.
Oh. Shot guys.
In the hot seat.
The big guys are always on the back.
Yeah. Ooh, shot guys.
You're gaming this out there, eh?
Am I? It is my, it's my, it's my computer.
Oh, it is?
I just turned the...
Oh, I see the volume up. Got it. There you go. That's it. Thanks, Peter. Shot, Frank. So Mayor Council, while you're coming down here, I'll go ahead and get us started. So we have Peter here from BUBA. And what Peter's talking about the product, but they have approached the city of Trinidad. BUBA is a Colorado-based company that is looking to kind of deploy some cutting-edge transportation technologies. So they're looking at working with us to use Trinidad as a pilot site for what you'll see. Peter will talk about this more in detail. But the thing I wanted to emphasize is, we would be looking at close to possibly an $80 million transportation solution for our community that we're hoping we could get 100% reimbursed by federal grant money. So I wanted you all to kind of see what this is about. It's a little out there. It's a little contemporary, but it might solve some of our transportation needs here in Trinidad. So I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thanks, Steve. As Steve said, I'm Peter Muller. I've lived in Denver area for 43 years now. First came to Trinidad in the early eighties and did a project on your airport. So I've been around a little bit. Used to focus on airport planning and engineering. And then about 20 years ago, I got interested in this technology and I've specialized in it for about 20 years now. And it's really something that's been really hard to get off the ground. It's technology that goes back 47 years. In Morgantown, West Virginia, it was first put in. And that system is still up and running 47 years later. Just that system has done nearly 200 million injury-free passenger miles. It's incredibly safe. And the whole industry around the world has never had an accident, you know? So it's remarkably safe, but it's also very effective and very efficient, very convenient to use, and all these things. Problem was, the Morgantown system got off the bad start back in 1970s. 1972, Trish Nixon opened it. It was going to be a big celebration, supporting her dad's reelection. She went out on the vehicle and it got stuck on the gridway. So it was a big embarrassment, a political embarrassment. It took them three years after that to actually get it up and open to the public. So it overwhelmed the budget, it overwhelmed the schedule. The federal government turned their backs on it. So what's happened is this technology is developed for the seeds. There is no up-and-running system, modern system, in the US. What I want is for that first modern system up and running in the US to be here in Trinidad. I want to use Trinidad as a demonstration project to show the rest of the US and the world that this technology really works. Trinidad couldn't afford this technology, just to go and buy it off the street and install it. You need federal support. And that's the exciting thing I'm going to talk about today, is that there are federal programs now that really support new innovative transportation technology. And Trinidad is very well positioned to get that money, and a lot of that money is 100%. It's not, requires no matching funds. Now, I can guarantee that we can do the whole project without any matching funds. We probably will do some, but I sure hope we can. Heck, we can get the matching funds from people like the state of Colorado, you know? So this is, this is a really exciting opportunity, but I want to tell you why I think it's so good for Trinidad and why Trinidad is such a good fit. You're a divided community that lacks connectivity. You're basically two different communities, separated by the freeway and the railroad. And the feds have a grant opportunity for that. It's called reconnecting communities. That's exactly what it does. It helps communities like Trinidad get reconnected and have access for everybody, not just the people who drive. When you drive your car around Trinidad, that's not that much of a bind. In fact, in some ways, the freeway is nice because you can zip from here to there, you know? But if you're not driving, it's not really good at all. So that's one thing, and that helps position Trinidad for these grants. And the other thing is that most of Trinidad is designated as an area of persistent poverty, that whole pink area. The federal, the feds say that's a poverty area. And that also not only helps you get the grants, but that helps you get 100% funding. And then the third thing that you qualify for, that also helps you get grants and 100% funding, is being rural. So there's not a lot of public transit going on in rural areas. So, but, but some of these grants, they designate, like 40% of the grant funds have to go to rural areas. So you qualify there too. So that being said, let me show you what I think the solution could look like. So this is just my idea, okay? It's had very little input from the community, other than the meeting on Tuesday, after which I added the station at Simpson's Rest. That serves two purposes. One is, we want this to be a showcase project, and going up to a nice view like that is great. But the other is, we want to prove it can do anything. And one of the things it needs to be able to do is climb a grade. And that's about a 10% grade up there, and we need to show we can do that. So the initial idea is that we would do this in two phases. The red phase has about eight stations, and then the purple phase adds another, I think it's another seven stations, seven or eight. So that, I don't want to take too long, too much of your time. I gave the staff quite a long presentation, and I've cut this short. But there are a number of reasons to do this in two phases, not just managing the money and all that. There's reasons in demonstrating that the system works on a small scale, and then you can expand it. And once you can prove we can expand it a little bit, then there's no reason why you can't expand it a lot, you know? So we can prove things like that. Stop me if you have any questions, by the way.
And one question that comes up, assuming a lot of this is available to, if there's any matching money that's necessary, you said maybe we can get it through the state?
Yes.
One thing that I think that would really help to get this, is to get a hold of the governor?
Yes.
And his, or his, through his staff?
Yes.
And talk to him about this, that this is something that is a possibility down here, because...
Absolutely.
This would be, I think, I think that would be good.
That would be excellent, yeah. And Steve was also talking about meeting with CDOT next month, and get them involved too. That'll happen a lot.
I just have a quick question. How many more signs do you have? Because I don't want to ask questions that are coming up.
Okay, four or five.
Okay. I'll ask questions after.
Okay, yeah. So these are the technologies we're talking about. On the upper left is Morgantown, which is 47 years old. Everything else is younger, but it gets, technologies get newer as you come from the top left to the bottom right. And as they, as they get newer, their capacity increases, their speed increases, their reliability increases. All those things get better. So as I said, they don't over 100 million injury-free passenger miles. They're in operation in five different countries, including the US, but the only one in the US is that old-fashioned system of Morgantown, which really wouldn't do the job here. And the newer versions of higher speed and capacity. We're talking about speeds ranging from 20 miles an hour and 45 miles an hour, cup speeds, capacities ranging from about 2,000 passengers per hour for direction, all the way up to about 19,000, which is better than most light rail. We want to need that capacity here, but we want to be able to prove that we can do that capacity here, and there are ways we can do that, which again, I won't, I won't get into. The biggest problem is, it's not well-known, it's not well-demonstrated, it's not really proven in the US, or anywhere for that matter. It's not really proven in an urban environment. Most of the, all of these systems are on the more like campus environments. That's Heathrow Airport. This is a park in South Korea. This is a tiny little application, so you've got two stations, you know? And this is a test track that's not quite in public service, it's under construction in Mexico. Wherever in Mexico be ahead of us is where we're at. So we want to connect and uplift Trinidad, and at the same time, prove the technology. We think we can do all those things together. This is a video of the systems that are in public service and/or commercially available. This is at Heathrow Airport. Notice it's roll-on, roll-off with bags and wheelchairs, it's fully ADN compliant. This demonstrates operations in snow and ice. This is that same system, but now it's in operation in South Korea. This is the one in the United Arab Emirates. And this is the system in Mexico. Notice that they have the ability to train vehicles together, and it can either be one vehicle or up to four vehicles. You select your destination, pay for your ticket, but a very short wait, typical wagon times are one or two minutes. Get on the vehicle, this is a six-passenger vehicle, they also have an eight-passenger version. So now I think I need to drag my mouse. Come on, go. No, it's not where to learn it. This is an animation, a visualization, it's not an actual system, but I'm going to try to fool you, okay? So here you see a station that's behind the sidewalk in a downtown area. The whole station, the gridway, the columns, everything fits behind the sidewalk in a downtown area. This system takes up very little space. Notice that the floor of the vehicle, the platform, and the sidewalk are all at the same level, so again, it's roll-on, roll-off. Vehicles not coming to the station bypass it, but going past the public for coming to the station. So they come down into it. So every trip on the system is express. Some of them can even be non-stop. So you go from a destination, origin to a destination without stopping. Very convenient, because it's down there on the sidewalk with people. This is how I'd like to do stations here in Trinidad, if at all possible. They take up a little more room than an elevated station, but they're more convenient for the passenger needs. So that's what I'm going to really show you about the technology, and I'm going to talk to you more about what we're trying to do with it here in Trinidad. And if you have any questions about the technology, feel free to ask. So what we want to do is give you an unsolicited proposal, and we're pretty sure that meets your procurement requirements, and certainly meets the state of Colorado's procurement requirements, and the federal procurement requirements too. As long as we can show what we're doing is unique, and one-off, and it absolutely is, nobody else is doing what we're doing. I don't think anybody else in the world is doing what we're doing, where they're acting as a project developer for these projects, and where they're offering to bring all these different technologies to the table, and let you have your choice of which one fits your project best. The only, the only other marketing like that that's going on is these individual companies going to communities and saying, "We'll sell you our system." Well, you can't buy that without competition, and we will buy the technology with competition. In fact, you'll be the ones that are buying the technology through the grant process. So what we want to do right away is apply for one of these grants, apply for funding of a feasibility study. And the big problem we have is that the most suited grant, it's called SMART, I forget exactly what that stands for, but it's all about new automated technology. And this project fits new criteria perfectly, and that is 100% grant. You don't have any choice to put matching money in it, they just give you 100%. It's due October 10th, so we're going to have to move really fast if we're going to make that submittal and get it in by October 10th. We believe we can, but there's some things we're going to have to do quite quickly to do that. So we do a feasibility study, environmental assessment, and preliminary engineering with that grant. Then we would negotiate a public-private partnership agreement with the city, where we, together with the city, form an entity that develops and builds the project, and procures the vehicles and all those things. And then we design, build, operate, and maintain that system. And that's a simplified version, okay? To give it a kind of another look, the steps of implementation. The first thing we need to do is the pre-development agreement. And we'll submit that, assuming you want to go ahead with this. We'll submit that shortly, in a week or two, and you can hopefully accept that before we submit the application for the grant. And the reason we need it to accept it before we submit the application for the grant is that in the application for the grant, you need to state that you have the expertise on board to do everything that's involved in the project. And unless you've actually procured those services, you can't really use our resumes from our team and all that in the application. So your application wouldn't stand as good a chance if we do it without that procurement happening. So that, that is a big hurdle that we need to figure out, we can overcome. So then we apply for the funding, do the feasibility study, and so on, kind of like I said before, negotiate the PPP agreement, build the infrastructure, the guyboes and the stations, acquire and implement the technology. And then we have, we build an eight-station Phase 1, do demonstration and proving on that, and then we build a seven-station Phase 2, and do a little more demonstration and proving on that.
So the money is available for Phase 1 and Phase 2?
The money, the, it's, okay, so let me see if I can explain this. There are, there are two primary grants. The first one is the SMART grant, and that has two phases. You can't apply for implementation unless you've done the first phase, which is feasibility study. So the first phase on the SMART grant is up to $2 million, which would be more than enough for us to do that feasibility study. And then, once we've got that done, we can apply for the second phase, which is implementation. Then we go up to 15 million for implementation, and we're going to need tens of millions of dollars for implementation. So, so what I'm thinking we're going to do is, we're going to apply for their second phase, and go for 10 or 15 million from that, and then we're going to go for the reconnecting communities grant, and that has a much higher amount of money available for implementation. So we would use those two grants for implementation. And if everything goes well, they'll both be 100% grants, and that'll be a difference. If we need match, like I say, we, I think we go to the state, or the county, or whoever's got deep pockets and can help us with this. This is a cause that has just multiple things that it checks on, I think we can find people to help us.
Well, you know, it, it does fit into the governor's plan, and even the current president's plan.
Yes.
You know, because they're talking about, you know, getting the emissions down quite a bit.
Right.
In fact, I was on the Southwest Chief Commission for four years, and they've been talking about trying to do, you know, transit within the state of Colorado. But in that, one of the problems that has been is the last mile.
Yes.
On the inner-city portion of it.
Yes.
So that would be very interesting.
Yeah.
As far as that goes, to transport people to the downtown area. So you've got to come, so it would be of interest to two different things. One is for that, getting down that emissions.
Yeah.
Is the biggest thing, I think.
Yeah. I really, I really like this idea. I mean, in concept, it really has the availability to turn Trinidad into a walking community, right?
Yeah.
I think we really should consider a beating, I think you should get connected to Allendale. I wanted to ask you, well, I wanted to ask Steve.
Sure.
If this was a non-solicited bid, and he'd mentioned that it would conform to our procurement...
That, that is a question we would need to answer, should you all wish to move forward. There's really no one else doing anything similar to this, so it may be something that we can justify under our sole source.
Okay, so it's, the answer's probably.
The answer's probably.
Then I have a couple other questions, if I, if I may. Do you, do you know, like, on a, per-passenger mile expense, how does a system like this compare to, say, a traditional mass transit bus?
Yeah, okay, so bus rapid transit costs, you know, 20 to 30 million a mile, so does this. It's very similar in cost, capital costs per mile. But measuring it per mile is, is not the right way to measure it. The right way to measure it is per passenger mile.
Yes.
And this attracts, like, three or four times as many passengers as bus rapid transit. So this costs about a quarter of the cost of bus rapid transit all over.
And so the...
Capital cost.
The passenger mile is about a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that, let me just say, that's capital cost. But what people don't talk about is operating costs.
That's, that's...
Oh, you were going to ask. Every public service transit system in this country, I think almost without exception, does not cover its operating costs from the fare box.
Right.
We more than cover the operating costs from the fare box. So once you've got the system installed, there's no ongoing expense to operate and maintain.
That was my question.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. So I guess, the other thing that I wanted to ask, under, under the right circumstances, and I don't think Trinidad would be the right circumstances, but is this ever going to be a model that can attract capital, capital dollars on the merit of the project itself?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but, and you're right, Trinidad probably would never make that model. What happens is, if you're familiar with the network effect, you know, the thing that makes these work is the fact that it's not just you and I who have a cellphone, it's everybody has a cellphone, that's what makes it work.
Right.
With, with this, if you have two stations, you only have two trips you can make, you can go there and you can go back. If you have four stations, you have 12 different trips you can make, okay? So when you increase the number of stations, the ridership goes up exponentially with this. That doesn't work for light rail and bus, because when you increase the number of stations, you have to stop for everybody. I didn't really point out, each of these stops is offline.
Right.
I get, well, I can say in expression when I'm stopped, but that's how it works. The stations are on side.
No, that, that turns everything from a combination to a permutation.
Yeah, exactly. So, so what happens when you, when you build a system, you have a capital cost, and, and operating cost and revenue, and as you add stations, your costs go up, but your revenues also go up. And the revenues go up faster than the costs, and after a while, the revenues overtake the costs, and it's self-funding. What's after a while? After a while, it depends on the density, but it's going to be in the order of 30 to 80 stations before you break even.
So in, in certain areas, the capital investment would be valuable on, on just a return on investment?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's what makes this, I think, an attractive technology, is the fact that it's worth the capital investment in some areas, so people are going to want to see it proved. And then, and the other thing is that the, the maintenance cost is covered by the ridership, which is a huge problem amongst other mass transit systems. A huge, um, the other thing that I was going to ask is more of a observation. You know, you mentioned the highway is potentially a benefit to people with cars. I think we can argue the opposite, and it's been set up here a bunch of times, but the highway itself is a divider in Trinidad, because it's, it's destroyed the connectivity between town in so many ways. So I think that it could be argued that the highway...
Even for cars?
Yeah. Separated, no, no, for just everybody in general.
Oh, definitely.
Separated the city. So it's a further, it's to augment, augment the, separate the community, is all I'm saying. I'm done talking.
Well, one thing I wanted to mention, I don't know how familiar you are, council members in there with bus rapid transit, but it is basically what, what that means is, they have to come in, redevelop the street, and put in a dedicated bus lane. It's very expensive, there's, obviously, every 15 years you have to repave it. So this having an impact where the footprint of the infrastructure on the ground level would be akin to an oversized light pole, really kind of lends itself well to not destroy our streets or the cause meter of road transit.
The surface space we take up is less than 1% of the surface space of, of bus rapid transit.
How are you going to build this on the streets are so narrow?
Yeah.
I mean, the feasibility is ridiculous. There's no way you can build that on the streets of Main Street and Commercial.
Well, you know, if the streets are too narrow, we've worked it, but if they've got...
Those are the main streets, why would you want to avoid them?
It's going to be over the streets, isn't it?
You've got streetlights on.
How, how are you going to go above the buildings?
No, but, but you just, you, you could...
You've got to take out sidewalks?
No, no. You're just putting poles in the...
How are you going to, how are you going to put the poles in the ground without making parking away?
How do you put light poles in? It's no different, the poles are just a little bigger, and they're not much...
But you're taking the space out.
No, you're putting it in the sidewalk, or behind the sidewalk, and you can hang the vehicle over the parking spaces, so you're not taking the parking spaces out. The only time we'll take some parking spaces out is when we're fitting stations in.
You know, Frank, Frank's had a lot of time on a lot of the utilities in Trinidad, so I think there are valid concerns, I'm sure.
Well, yeah, you can watch out for underground utilities and things like that.
I was wondering, um...
But, but we can avoid streets that are not appropriate. You don't have to go down every street you're not planning, and the streets that I picked may not be the best ones.
I was wondering if it'd be possible to prove, to provide in some way, like using, because modern graphic generation's pretty powerful. I was wondering if there'd be some way to show, like, the block of where the art space building is, with the system actually installed for like a two-block length? Because that would answer that question.
Yeah.
That's a very good question.
I have. So how did you come to picking Trinidad for this?
Okay.
There's thousands of...
Yeah, good, good questions, okay? I was looking at the reconnecting communities, well, first of all, I'm from Colorado. Colorado has great public-private partnership laws that allow you, that law allows you to pick a firm without competition, if they are unique. So, so I'm focused on Colorado for those reasons. Then I was looking for communities that are divided by transportation infrastructure because of this reconnecting communities grant. And so I started at the north, and looked down, and Fort Collins isn't really divided by the highway, and so on, until you get into Denver. It would take me longer to get a phone call with a janitor in Denver than it took me to get this meeting with you.
So the circumstances picked us.
Yeah, so I'm still trying to get ahold of Colorado Springs. I, I started calling them months before I started calling you, okay?
I know, we are.
I did, I did talk to Pueblo, and Pueblo was interesting, but they didn't want to go after the grant right now. So you were next.
You know, one of the things that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, one thing I was going to mention, you know, that's pretty much inner-city I'm talking about, other than the, you know, the high school area, San Juan Willow Street.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we have here in Trinidad, we have a lot of elderly people.
Yes.
And I think you had mentioned something about, would it be feasible to maybe look initially at getting some transportation from, let's say, at a station up in Allendale, to come downtown to, like, safely?
Yeah.
And maybe even up there by, by where I live, which is just right outside the town?
Yeah.
Where you would bring them into towns for the elderly people, and even people that don't want to...
They already named the station, they've named the station after you.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, those are things that...
The station, we call it.
Yeah. But these are things that I think should be considered.
These are all things that should be considered in the feasibility study. Also, I want to get to the kids on, going to school on the SMART plan and school buses, to the extent possible. School buses, in my mind, are a big problem.
And you say, like I said, you know, up in Allendale, a lot of kids come from up in Allendale, there's kids other parts of town, that's true.
I have another observation question, both. I, I really, you know, downtown is designated historic.
Yeah.
All right? So I'm really opposed to putting those on Main Street. All right, so I'm really opposed to putting those on Main Street in the historic district. I would be more willing to do the fringes and maybe like on the east part of Main Street. But I just can't see those structures on our Main Street.
What about running down First Street with access?
First Street, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I see. There's no problem with going to parallel streets.
Right, but I just wanted to bring it up to you.
Yeah, also, as Steve mentioned, we can try to design the stations so they have the same historic appearance. You know, the guideways, you have a little less flexibility to the guideway, but there's flexibility there too. You know, so we can try to make this whole thing look more historic.
Okay, so I have another question.
Yeah.
Procedural question. So if we were to agree to continue on this journey together, how much would staff be involved in this? Our staff? How much in-kind would you need from us to complete the beginning process?
Well, not much. I need, I need to work with your grants person mainly, your procurement person. And, and the grants person is really gonna be involved in just taking what we write and develop and plugging that into the application. So, you know, it's gonna be quite a few hours for her. And then on the project itself, you do high-level administration of the project. We manage the whole thing. You know, when I did your Tally Ride Airport here, and I worked in airports for twenty years and all around the state, mostly small general aviation airports. We got them federal grants for almost everything we did. And we managed those federal grants almost completely. Those communities didn't have a clue how to do it. We did it all, you know, and that's what we would offer here too. I can't say we can do it all because there are some things you pretty much have to do. But the other thing that we can do is we can get five or ten percent of the funding to come back directly to the city to cover those expenses.
Now, what permanent jobs, how many permanent jobs will this create?
It's a good question.
Oh, I, to be honest, for your application, I haven't thought about it. In Pueblo, it was thousands, but that was a much bigger, it's a much bigger application. This will create a lot of permanent jobs. It also depends on, um, jobs to run this system without any maintenance. You're looking at probably three jobs per shift, per day. You know, and it depends how long we run it, you're gonna be two, maybe three shifts, you know? So that's quite a few jobs just for operating.
Well, you know, there's some good questions raised, you know, about maybe removing or moving the stations around to different areas. You know, one of the things that, you know, since I've been there is that I felt, I feel like we need to figure out a way to place ourselves above, you know, other communities. You know, we've done a lot of work over the last several years. And I think this is a possibility that will place us in that area. I mean, it's gonna take, like I said, a lot of work and a lot of consideration.
Yeah.
But I think it just puts us above, above
I like how too, it has the real potential to fit in with our strategic plan. I just like saying the word strategic. I think, I think it really can fit in with that though, because down in Albuquerque, they have the tramway to the top. Now granted, it's a lot bigger scale than this, but man, like if you talk to any, almost anybody getting gas from out of town at the gas station, everyone says they're interested in seeing the top of Simpson's Rest. Yeah, and you, and they say, you start to tell them how to get there and you quickly see their eyes glass over. But man, if you say, oh, the Safeway Station?
Put your car just down there.
Put two bucks in that box right there, the white thing will come along and blow them up there.
But that would be a good thing, bringing, bringing the local people downtown.
That's oversimplified.
Bringing the local people downtown, but also offering the, like I said, Simpson Rest and then maybe other areas of interest that tourists would wanna visit.
Right.
And making those a station by itself, so I think that would be
Peter, once we do, once we would do original deployment of the system, I assume it can be expanded.
That, that's why I said we would demonstrate the red and the purple. So we show you can expand it, and in fact, there's no limit. Everything is decentralized on the system, so there's no limit on how far it can be expanded. Theoretically, you could expand somewhere up into Denver and hook into a widespread system in Denver. Maybe we'll get there one day, I don't know. I did wanna say, it was a good question in the meeting with employees. They said, well, how are you gonna cross the freeway? And I said, well, I don't think we can get underneath it, you know? We're probably gonna have to go over it and just eat that cost of doing it. And they said, great, because then everybody that goes down the freeway is gonna say, what's that?
You know, long, long-term, you know, you know, we're looking at Fisher's Peak.
Yeah.
And that would be someplace, and this would be down the road.
That'd be awesome.
Hell with hiking. I'm sorry.
At least to get them, you know, to see Fisher's Peak, but the park itself.
No, but like, so mountain bikers would love that, you ride to the top and bike down. That, that's a, that's a thing, the ski resorts close down, not close down, stop operating in the summer, but they do mountain bike chairlifts. So if, a cap, big, bold capital if, you could do that, man, that would be a money drawing machine. Um, I would say, this is just my opinion, lots of stuff goes over I-25. I'd say go over it because people will ask, what is it? And they will stop.
Yeah.
You see, Trinidad's in the Jetson area.
That's right.
You gotta talk to the state highway.
No, no, absolutely, no.
And the railroad too.
Absolutely.
Real big issues, but yeah.
Yeah.
Especially in that area.
But in Denver, they cross light rail, crosses I-25.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's not a problem, they just have to
It can be done, you just have to follow the rules.
That's right.
You can't surprise them.
Well, Mayor Council, we would hope that this would be something CDOT would really support us on and embrace it, and really wanna see this demo project happen.
So you
What I'm really curious about is how come Piabo was not interested?
That's a good question too.
I mean
It was, it was too quick for them. They, they didn't wanna move that fast.
What makes you think we don't wanna move that fast?
Actually, I, I think the real reason was that they already were planning a grant application to this grant. And they didn't wanna compete with themselves, which I, I don't get the logic of because to me, if you put in two applications, you're more likely to get one-hundred.
And they're putting, they were gonna put a separate grant in for this besides yours?
No, no. They're putting in a separate grant for something else. I think it's for coordinated traffic lights.
So, um, it's, it's my understanding though that from the initial perspective, the burden on staff right now would be minimal.
Yeah.
And, and you agree with that?
Yeah, council members, mayor, I think Peter's absolutely right. We would use our grants.gov account, all of our SAMP numbers, everything that we have set up in the federal system, so it would be the city of Trinidad's application. These folks would be writing it, we would ask Talitha to actually copy it over and submit it into the system. So that would be the bulk of the work. And then I also wanted to just make sure we're perfectly clear on this. What we're talking about today is, do we wanna do the feasibility study? And that's just to see if this is even something that would work for Trinidad, be a good fit for us and apply for that grant funding.
What's the cost of the feasibility study again?
We don't know yet, but it's gonna be zero to you.
Yeah, so, but, but that's my point, it is, it is zero to us. So my opinion is, if you're presented with something that could potentially have huge positive effects and the net cost to us right now is zero, and I, I mean, I know we all know this, but we're in the driver's seat of what costs we accept. Because as a cost develops on the horizon, it will be brought to us and we'll have a vote on it.
Right.
So right now, we're saying, do you want to have the potential for something great? Uh, yes or no? Would it cost you nothing right now?
And through the feasibility process, we would absolutely have presentations to Historic Preservation Commission, talk with Public Works about, I really appreciate your, your point, Frank, about Main Street. We don't, staff doesn't feel like that's a good option either, but we're thinking First Street or something like that adjacent might be a good hub to have it, so it circles around downtown. But I'm not clear on that.
The other thing too then, we're talking about meeting with CDOT here shortly.
Yeah.
It must be in trouble.
Early October.
October. And I think that would be a good time to ask, man, and to talk to them, to say, this is something that's coming for us. And we're
First and
It would be nice to get a letter from them supporting it.
Yeah.
First and Commercial would be an outstanding station. We just did the work. It's nice and flat access right to Main, there's lots of open room.
I have another, this is a kind of legal question. So, all right, we go forward, let's say we go forward with the feasibility study.
Yeah.
Okay, so at what point when we, if we say, now this isn't gonna work, does your firm have any repercussions against Trinidad?
No, you can fire us, or we can part ways anytime anybody wants to. It's gonna be one of those
Are we gonna have a contract between the two of them?
Yes, we have a contract, but the contract will be one that, that says if anyone doesn't wanna move on, they need to give something like thirty days' notice and then it's a wash. You know, and, and all it would be owing would be anything that's already
What lawyers?
What did you say about us owing?
All, all that would be owing is anything that's already incurred, you know? And, and we wouldn't incur anything that isn't refundable through the grant, you know, so
You know, I, I think that the getting, applying for the feasibility study, we're not out anything. I think it's worth a shot.
Yeah, lawyers will be involved. What could go wrong? Lawyer jokes. Love those.
So do we have a consensus here? Do you guys feel?
Mike, if, if you don't aim high, you're never gonna hit high, so
Name it. Um, I did a little research with the transportation guys up in Denver. Um, historically Trinidad had a monorail.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And I think that
We did?
Yes, yeah, back in the day, I did a little research.
She was in Dave Bicicca's office.
But I think anything leading from Fisher Peak
Home Main Street?
To
A railcar.
To, what is it?
Oh, railcar, we, I, yeah, I thought we had a monorail.
No.
Fisher Peak connected to, what is it?
More on the side.
The other peak.
Simpson's Rest.
Simpson's Rest.
Well, they had them all the way to Cokeville, it goes to all the mining places.
Yeah, I saw the, I saw the trolley.
Yeah.
This is just, this is just an updated version.
Yeah.
Frank, what do you think?
Well, like I say, you can't lose anything if we're not gonna put any money out. I mean, I think it's worth it, kinda looking at it.
I'm just, just gonna depend on staff to give us the right information.
I mean, we have our city attorney, and if it helps you all, I did contracts administration for seven years.
Okay.
We would never sign an agreement that's gonna commit us to anything where our taxpayers would be out money recklessly.
Yeah.
And again, the first contract is just gonna be, we're gonna apply for this grant funding. If we get it, we'll move forward with the feasibility study that'll be paid for by the grant. I can't imagine that's gonna be that much in dollars just to do the feasibility study. From there, we would take that to apply for
Is that, can we work with that timeframe? That's
Yeah.
It's cool.
It's a date.
That's a really question for Peter.
Yeah, we, we can definitely meet it, okay, that's not a problem. The only problem is if you can get the procurement done in that time, then it takes care of us being able to use our team's resumes in the application because we're contracted with you. That, that's why we need the contract done quickly, but the contract, like Steve said, is gonna be, I won't say non-commodal, but it's not gonna commit you to spending money and all kinds of money and things like that.
And this would be in phases, it would be collaborative. You know, you kind of think of the Fox West Theater as somewhat analogous to this, like kind of a lot of, but go ahead.
Well, what I really, really like about this is it, it's just so, it lines up on so many fronts. It's, uh, it's a green solution in the sense of it's mass transit. It's a, it's futuristic, even though it's old technology. Um, it's a, it's using grand dollars for proof of concept that, in the proper settings, will be viable for commercial investment, which means it's attractive and will be well-watched. I mean, there's a lot of symbiosis going on.
Right.
You brought up a good point, and we need to check this. How much power is it gonna take? Because our sub-station's at full load down.
Yeah.
So you need to do the electrical survey to see if we have enough power, because that's gonna be a real big issue.
Yeah, we will look at that, sure.
Because if you, if you extreme the amount of power, it's gonna be kinda tough.
Yeah, if that's an issue, that definitely needs to be something in the feasibility study. We do have a potential to put solar panels on top of the guideway. And you can actually operate the whole thing off of solar panels on top of the guideway. We love the thought of doing that, but we're also concerned that people will go, yeah, it's ugly. You know, and so I'm not su, but maybe we can do a solar farm somewhere off to the side somewhere.
We are, we are working on one right now.
And then pile this off a solar farm. In fact, we've got one better. We'll use the solar farm to make electricity, to make hydrogen.
But we still have to get an agreement with ARPA if we're using solar power.
Really?
Yes, we do.
Well, if we can, we can, we can then generate hydrogen and run these vehicles off hydrogen. That's where we'd really like to go, because hydrogen, I forget how many miles you get in a kilogram of hydrogen. It's a long way, you know, compared to the battery that you have to carry around that's so heavy.
Well, that, that sounds like, let's move forward with what we're gonna do now.
Yep. We'll start working, Mayor. Last thing I wanted to say though, to Councilmember Williamson's point on the strategic plan, I imagine transportation is going to be one of the key things that comes out of that. We have no public transportation in Trinidad right now. We don't even have Uber or Rideshare that exists here. We do have a little bit of transportation that the COG provides for some site-to-site trips. But in terms of people being able to get around, you all are familiar with Denver. They've had a transportation nightmare, and they didn't plan for future transportation, and then they grew. And they lost all of the corridors and the opportunities to really put that in. Had they done that before they grew, it would have been a much better system solution. And I kind of envision that's where Trinidad's at. So this is forcing us to have a conversation about transportation, but I think it's something that we should be having.
I think one of the things that would be good is I could go out and talk to CDOT
Yeah.
And see if we can maybe get a letter or
Yeah, we will.
Like I said, this is a green solution. Send that up to the governor and get his lesson, I think he'd go for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Man.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks for coming down today.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anytime, come visit.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It was wonderful.
No, you're fine, you.
Okay, the time is now forty-eight, two forty-eight PM, and the work session has been concluded. And we now go into our special meeting. And today is Friday, September the first, twenty twenty-three. And the time is now two forty-eight PM. And we have a few items to discuss, so this is one in person as well as through Zoom. Any roll call, please?
Devono? Gringo?
Here.
Ogletree? Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Present.
Rico?
Here.
Okay, the first item on here is special meeting item, item number one, a public hearing for consideration. I've had an ordinance submitting a proposed home rule charter amendment to the voters of the City of Trinidad at regular municipal election, to be held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three, which would remove the City of Trinidad Municipal Landfill Enterprise designation. Hearing is now open.
Mayor and members of city council, I would ask that you actually reschedule this public hearing to September the twenty-fifth. Despite having gotten notice over to the Chronicle News for the announcement of this public hearing for this ordinance, due to, I guess, there was a technical issue on their side with respect to pagination. They didn't print the entire ordinance completely. And so we wouldn't meet the requirements of the chartered whole hearing today. So I need to ask that it be rescheduled to September the twenty-fifth. I understand that you probably are concerned with respect to setting our ballot content. It's due on September the eighth to the county. We're going to have to submit the question as proposed in the ordinance and then have approval after the fact. If for some reason, approval after If for some reason approval after the fact falls through, then, um, it would just be null and void. The vote would be null and void come election day. Yeah.
What drives me crazy here is it's not our fault, it's the newspaper's fault.
That's right.
So why should we be, you know, that's what bugs me is why should we be bound to buy someone else's mistake?
We just have legal requirements. I mean, you're right, but for, for publication.
Can we win any recourse? I mean, we pay for those.
So they're not gonna charge us for that. I don't know what else to say. This is, we're gonna have problems like this going forward, I'm afraid, until we can figure out, um, exactly what their deadlines are. At one point, it was, um, Friday at noon. Planning commission was scheduled for especially because we couldn't, um, meet the requirements of the noticing for their regular meeting. And then we thought we were going to meet it at noon to submit by noon yesterday and they had changed the deadline to eleven yesterday. It's, it's gonna be difficult and it's going to spread out the time for things to get approved.
I.
We're gonna be one month to the next on all of our approvals.
Are all these?
No, just the landfill one.
Okay.
Just the landfill.
Well, that's a little bit better.
No, it's much better.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's gonna make me very happy. What do you do?
I, I had a question, if I may. It may be outside the scope of this discussion, but, um, you know, obviously it's a, it's a two-part question. Obviously, it's disappointing. Has something like that ever happened where we, where we submit the language and then, uh, after approval? Has that ever happened before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and then the second part is more for general discussion, but it pertains to this. Unfortunately, I think if we move forward in this day and age, we're gonna be faced more and more with this because, you know, paper, um, and I, I think it's unfortunate and I regret it, but paper seems to be going further and further away anyway. I think it would be a good idea if we, um, looked into, um, making the appropriate changes to the charter that allow us to make different means of notification. So I think that that's a discussion that we should probably have at some point. Sounds like Audrey already said.
We were talking about that today. I don't mean to steal Audrey's thunder. State statute defines publication. I forget the exact wording, but it has to be print media by way of state statute.
So maybe they should make it.
Right. We would hope and anticipate that that would be done. And you're absolutely right to, to be in keeping with the times.
Okay.
That should be done, but we're beholden to that definition.
And we do have a lot of elderly people that wouldn't necessarily get an online subscription to these papers.
It's unfortunate.
I mean, it's.
I like it to print these papers.
So who would, who would make that determination? Would it be Tommy Clark?
As far as?
That twenty-fifth day, if we can still get to get her on?
No, I will certify the petition with a question on there. Um, and we'll conduct the public hearing. I think we've acted in good faith to bring this forward, this matter forward. And we'll still conduct the public hearing. If for some reason, though, um, something happens at the public hearing and we decide that the question is, it shouldn't really have gone forward, then, and the ordinance fails your approval, then even though it appears on the ballot, it would, we wouldn't make a change. If it passed, we wouldn't change our process.
Is there any legal concern?
No. No, it would be, if it was challenged, it would be a matter, it would be a determination that we did not meet legal compliance, technical legal compliance. And so as Audrey said, it would, it would simply be nullified. It's not like we are trying to pull a fast one. Um, it's just a matter of what we are doing would be, uh, in insufficient compliance with the law to have it, have it adopted. If not, it would not go through and it would simply be, be considered to be nullified. The change wouldn't happen until, you know, after the election anyway, January.
Correct.
Yeah, so there would be time to, you know, to see if there was a challenge. And, but it would be a matter of no order, no foul.
So you have no concern then?
I don't.
Okay, so we just need to get a, a motion to postpone, uh, this public hearing consideration of this ordinance to September the twenty-fifth, is that correct?
And I have to apologize upfront, that's gonna be a special meeting with your work session. Yes.
So we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we change this till September twenty-fifth.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, we probably better state what time because you're setting the public hearing.
Six o'clock. All right. Or when, when do we start?
That's the work session date.
That, oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Three o'clock typically.
Eight o'clock, fine.
Three o'clock.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? I need a call vote, please.
Griggo.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item two, a public hearing for consideration ordinance submitting a proposed home rule charter amendment to the registered electors of the city at the regular municipal election to be held on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, regarding the requirement for publication of ordinances. Hearing is now open. Okay, Audrey, what else we got?
Mayor and city council regarding.
No bad news.
No. This, this one is fine. Regarding, um, this proposed change, the charter currently requires ordinances be published in ten-point type. And, um, I recently, very recently learned that that wasn't being done. So we need to change the charter so that we can comply with what the charter says. So removing the size of the font would allow us to comply with the charter.
Okay. Any questions from council?
So what happens if this fails and what?
I would imagine, I don't even wanna imagine. I, I know you want to.
I retract my question.
Mayor Council, if it fails, then, uh, the newspaper would be breaking the law.
Okay.
Just saying, breaking the law.
Have we made an agreement to change order?
So, no, there's no agreement. What I, what I'm more worried about would happen is, um, in order to comply with the charter, we would have to publish all of our ordinances as, um, for instance, a display ad.
Yeah.
And we would bear the cost of that, which would be horrible. We would probably not want to pass local laws until we could get it back on the.
Okay.
And Mayor Council, we do intend to put out some explanatory information on what this is for our voters.
Any other questions on that item? Do you want to speak for or against? Hearing is now closed. Second reading ordinance submitting a proposed home rule charter amendment to the registered electors of the city at the regular municipal election to be held on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, regarding the requirement for publication of ordinance. Entertained a motion?
No.
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call vote, please.
Griggo.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Item three, public hearing for consideration of ordinance increasing the tourism tax authorized at the November sixth, twenty, uh, two thousand, authorized at the November sixth, two thousand and one election from three percent to six percent commencing in January one, twenty twenty-four in the city of Trinidad, Colorado on transactions of furnishing rooms or accommodations, the process of which to be used for purposes authorized by chapter seven, section seven dash forty-six. And the Trinidad municipal code or as may be amended as an increased tax pursuant to section twenty of article ten of the Colorado Constitution. Hearing is now open. Mr. Ruger.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very excited about this one. You all have been briefed on this previously, um, so I don't think there's any surprises going into adopting this question. But just wanted to remind council of a couple of things. Um, one, we, uh, really would like to see this to beef up our quality of life funding, um, really get back to having some semblance of a Parkland Rec Department. For GO-Code grants, having our facilities better maintained and dedicated funding for that will, um, significantly increase our eligibility. And I can't emphasize how that important, how important that is when we're doing, um, for multi-million dollars eventually to build a Riverwalk, for example. So it's, it's just a crucial thing. We will be putting out, um, promotional information to the extent that we can, um, explaining what the question is all about. However, we are, Jared Chatterley and I are working with the Trust for Public Lands who want to come in and support this initiative. And I think I told you before, but it bears repeating, they've looked at the ordinance, they're very proud of it, and they say that this is a model that they would like to extend to other communities in Colorado and really kind of use us as, as the test ground. So getting this three percent increase would really, really help that initiative. If we don't get the three percent increase, it's not doomsday. It just means that we have half the funding available for these initiatives than we, we would otherwise. But, uh, it would really cripple the amount of work we'd be able to get done. So we'd hate to see that happen. Uh, last thing I'll say is we've done some analysis, um, we've presented that to you all regionally. We're very low. In fact, we are the lowest I could find on lodging tax. So, uh, several other communities, it's gotten back to me, they'll have lodging quest, uh, lodging tax ballot questions on their, um, November ballot as well. So we're not alone. In fact, we'll probably still be one of the lower ones in the region.
And we could, you know, whenever they do have the, uh, meet the candidates night, I think that we can present that. Questions from council?
Yeah.
Nothing here.
Stay the course.
Just, um, in really rough numbers, Steve, and, and for anybody that happens to be listening, um, it's obviously we're only gonna be double.
Yeah.
The collection, but that, that is going to increase from what to what?
Sure, absolutely. It's a great question. Right now, we're collecting approximately half a million dollars a year in lodging tax annually. Um, I guess that would be per year, right? So we would double that. However, I also wanna acknowledge, we don't know what the impact of the new hotel that just opened will be. If, um, it's gonna be a redistribution of people who are staying in Trinidad or increase our, our nightly stays. Uh, one of the, oh, go ahead.
I'll finish.
Well, I just wanted to say one more point because I'm glad you asked this. Uh, one of the things that I think is really important for our friends in the lodging community to understand is, yes, um, this is not necessarily going directly to marketing and advertising and promoting Trinidad, thirty-five percent of it is. But the quality of life initiatives that we'll be able to attain from this will significantly enhance the experience for visitors to Trinidad. And that's, that's very important, um, I think, as, as we draw more people to our community.
I think, I think that becomes more and more important as we look into the future because, you know, as people are governed more and more by, um, experience-based outings, everyone's referring to their cell phone for Yelp reviews or whatever they use. So people will see the, the better reviews about a cleaner town. It, it, it all works well together. That being said, um, you know, tax is probably the, uh, a three-letter word that's closest to a four-letter word always. But the nice part about that is, um, it is an increase in revenue to Trinidad without affecting Trinidad, um, residents. So I think that's, that's super, super important to note. And it's really going to benefit, um, local residents in many, many ways. So I, I think it's really, really a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, I did have a conversation, you actually, uh, mentioned it to me this morning. The chamber president and they are willing to promote this, being that we have not promoted ourselves, but they are willing to help promote it, so, uh, talk to the chamber.
I will. Thank you, Mayor.
As they can. And I think it'd be a good idea maybe even to, uh, maybe even send some information out to some of the other clubs, road, uh, quans, but, um, maybe have the chamber get hold of it. Maybe doesn't know, I think it'd be a good idea to get, get that word spread.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Anyone to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance increasing the tourism tax to six percent? Hearing none. It's closed. Item three eight, second reading of the ordinance increasing the tourism tax authorized at the November sixth, two thousand and one election from three percent to six percent commencing January one, twenty twenty-four in the city of Trinidad, Colorado, on tracks, transactions of furnishing rooms or accommodations